I want to go ahead and put it on the radar. I want to ask council to review the -- we're looking into the legal aspects of repealing the Fly Creek apartment decision. Of course, that will be y'all's decision, but we are looking at the liability for the city, the cost of this. Things like the Fly Creek apartment really need to be in the future if we decide to -- well, we're going to get sued, we're a city, but we need to say from now on we're piggybacking on whoever, you know, the developer is if we're supporting a developer or one of our regulations or ordinances. So, we can't put ourselves as the city that's going to always pay all the attorney fees for everybody. That's just how we're going to do things differently. But, in this situation, we probably need to look at it as something that we need to repeal. And, the rest of it, I think, I discussed at the work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation. This would be for agenda items number five through 15. If you'd like to approach the council and speak to these items five through 15, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no, and I will close public participation, and there will be another opportunity at the end of tonight's meeting to address the council on other items of your interest. Council comments? Councilman Robinson?
Yes. The Christmas parade was held on December the fifth, third, Friday, a couple Fridays ago?
A year ago, felt like.
It was a week and a half ago, I think. All right. We had a great time. I know I rode, Jimmy rode, the mayor was there. Jack and Robert rode also on the Hogerville. We had a great time. It's another great event. Thanks again to our events coordinators, the city. Sherry Sullivan, Paige Crawford, we had a wonderful time. It was very well attended and another great event for the City of Fairhope. So, thank you.
My comments. I met with the Historic Preservation Committee and the Environmental Committee, and just want to say we've got a lot of fantastic people willing to donate their time and energy to help and make this a better city, and really appreciate getting to know everybody. So, look forward to working with them moving forward.
Councilman Brown?
Yeah. Met with the Education Advisory Committee last week, and they are starting to have some good collaboration with all the principals and the feeder pattern. Also, make the other councilmen aware that I did pick up the pedestrian and bike committee liaison for y'all.
I haven't appointed you yet. There's still time to back out. It's later on the agenda.
Thank you. Also, want to congratulate the gas department. I think I saw something in email where they were top 500 in the nation, so good job. Robert Rowe?
Yes, sir. 167 out of 500.
Pretty good. That concludes my comments.
Like Dan, I heard Dan saying something about best tasting water and two steaks over there as well. Councilman Boone?
I would like to talk about that because we've been a lot of place, or I've been a lot of places, and I'm going to tell you, Fairhope's got the best taste of water. The only water I've tasted better in the mountains of Montana, in those streams. And other than that, this is the best taste of water in the country.
I agree.
And I appreciate that, Dan McCleod. The other thing is, is the personnel board, we didn't get a chance to go over this at the work session, so we bring this up. But the personnel board will be meeting in January for all those that are interested in coming at 7:30 in the morning. And, the harbor board is looking, I think we're going to, Bobby, you can correct me, we're going to start looking at the lease, and we're going to, we have a deal on the agenda tonight to get started toward fixing the walls. That's all I've got.
Thank you. For my comments, I do want to thank you, Mayor, for telling us that the department heads are going to start giving us good news at every work session. I look forward to the work session in which we have time to receive that news. We've been so busy.
Thank you.
But, there's a lot going on right now in the city, and, you know, department heads, if we don't get to you, and council members, if we don't get to your committee reports during the work session, it's because that we are, you know, discussing, and I really appreciate the discussion that we've been having in our past several work sessions. It's very helpful. Want to thank IT again for also making those available to the public live streaming. I do have one order of business that we did not get to in the work session, and I am not going to put this on the agenda, and I'm not going to ask you to vote on it tonight. But I want to get an idea of where you stand on this, and that is, and Sherry, if you'll come join me at the podium up here, or come to the podium. As most of you know, you may have received a complaint about the Christmas tree lights. And, I hear you. Pardon?
Just real quick, I wanted to say something because this is an amazing project name, but in our staff meeting, we talked about it, we put our heads together, what can we do? And let me tell you, take it away, Sherry. Well, we decided that --
-- Trump, hoping that he might drive through Fairhope on his way to Mobile. Y'all think that's a great idea?
I think it's a great idea.
Well, council, to do that, the cost for additional lights is $23,452 plus freight, and it does not include city labor to install. So, I have a question about that. Is that going to require, is that going to be some overtime? I had heard a number of $12,000 for labor.
That's correct.
So, we're looking at a total cost of $35,000 to enhance the lighting of the trees downtown, and that could be accomplished in about a month's time, maybe?
We had actually, with the labor, we had taken six employees, three crews, on an average, three trees per night, if they're larger trees. So, we said we could take six employees, three crews for two weeks, and we could do the 37 trees that need to be relit, that need to be completed. And that would be for $12,000, that would be city labor. We did meet last Friday and talk about possibly looking at contract labor. The thing we were worried about with that is once we put that out to bid, the mayor had asked us to look at that at the staff meeting. Once we did the specs, put it out to bid, we were probably looking at, at least with the holidays, probably mid-January before they could mobilize and get a crew started. So, we would be looking at the first of February, possibly before we completed the trees. And at that point, you know, you really only got six weeks for them to be left up. So, we felt using our staff at this given point in time, and using some lesser paid employees, we did look at that, would be the better alternative.
So, council, these items are possibly, there is a question whether or not we can even get them. They may not even be in enough supply. This is available on NIPA buying contracts, so it would not have to be bid. We can buy directly off the price. It's already been bid through this national buying group. So, what I need to know, if we could get the ball rolling, is, once again, this is not a vote. We can vote on it for the expenditure at the next meeting, is whether or not you would support this roughly $35,000 cost?
For me, it's, yeah, fix the lights, yes.
Make the lights great again.
Make the lights great again, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is disappointing news, because I've been telling everybody around town that lighting of the trees was so successful, we're going to have a second one to light the top.
Well, we can do that, too. We can do that, too. We can have another tree lighting.
Hey, are these lights, I'm sorry, Kevin, I interrupted for you, but I'm going to keep interrupting, I'm sorry.
That is still my council comment.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Are the lights that we buy, are any of those reusable? I mean, or do we buy, re-buy each year?
No, we do buy, we do buy each year, but we have reused them in the past. Usually, the electric department takes them down, they bring them to the Nick Center wrapped in bundles, and our volunteers actually plug them in, check them, rewrap them, and box them all together, the ones that are still good that we can reuse. So, we do reuse some of them. Obviously, some of them are, we're not going to be able to reuse. The lights, we're looking at purchasing right now, and I will caution you, we have, I've searched pretty much all weekend. This is the better price. I've found an online company who can also get them, but there's only a certain amount in nationwide from this company. And, we can, the longer we put the decision off, the lesser amount of lights we're going to be able to get, because as they sell them out of inventory, then we might not be able to get everything that we need. But, they are LEDs. I know there's been some talk about infrastructure and not having the infrastructure to support what we're doing downtown. As long as we use LED lights and not the incandescent, we will be fine doing that. And these are LED lights.
So, just, I mean, so when we talk about 27,000 in lights, it's not a, I mean, it's not just a pay it out, it's gone, and these are lights that we could potentially reuse next year?
I would say a majority of them will be gone, and we've already spent how much, we've already spent 15,000 or 20,000 dollars on lights.
We have spent, yes, quite a bit on lights, and it does straddle, it's more than that, but it straddles two budget years. But, we have spent the budget on lights. There is no more budget for lights, so I'll make that clear.
Mr. Cluster, how much did we spend already on lights?
We've spent already a little 47,000 dollars on lights.
47,000 plus another 35,000.
Yeah, but I mean, we've talked about this before.
You know, maybe, maybe 10% of the lights you're going to be able to reuse. The problem is, these lights are only good for
For so many hours, right.
60 days of outdoor use. We've got them up there for almost six months.
Right.
You know, we take them down, the Nick Center does, they go through them, they check them, but by the time we use them again, the sockets all corroded up on them and everything like that. So, you know, even the ones they checked that are working at that time, by the time we go put them up, they may not work.
That was a question I had, it still doesn't change my vote. Make our lights great again.
Thank you. The other thing that we have talked about doing, just so you know, is this is a good time for us to do some test lights, and this was one of Mayor Wilson's comments to us, you know, look for some different light alternatives for next year. So, we are looking at some, possibly some solar lights, some net lightings to make the process a little bit easier, and just to see how they look. So, we will be doing some test trees along with star shower. We can do, I mean, we, any kind of, any kind of lights that you would have suggestions on, or, you know, our residents would have suggestions on, we're open to that, to be able to do test trees, just to see what works best for us.
We can ask people to put it on the new Facebook.
Absolutely. We're ready to launch it tomorrow. Make our lights great again.
And just so you all know, too, we got, we put up over 7,000 strings, that's because over a tree, dropping out over 7,000.
What I'm trying to figure out is, we ain't never had this problem before. We put up lights every year since the long I've been here, so what? What's the problem in getting the lights now?
They're so huge.
Do I know?
They're so, they're so huge on the
Like on Sexton Street, you know, the way we did the bottoms, some of them trees are, a lot of them trees are pulling more than what the average house is pulling on current.
Well, I understand that, but if we use the LED lights, I don't think we're going to have a problem with current. I think it's functional just getting the lights there. Because this call, I think everybody is surprised, and as far as fixing the lights, I'd love to fix them, but it's a lot of money, what I call a short period of time. But I'm more interested in how, we don't have this problem next year, and those trees are done like they're supposed to be done.
Well, if you do all LED, it's going to help. It'll help us for a while.
What I want to point out, too, the expense is not in the lights.
No, it's in the labor.
It's the labor.
No, I understand.
I mean, it's significant. That's why we want to look into possibly doing the contract.
What do you take from that?
Arts and crafts. And that's another thing, is, I mean, as you debate this, you have to think about the seasons that we're coming up on. Obviously, tree lighting is the most important part of it because you like the trees, but you're also coming up on Mardi Gras, you're coming up on arts and crafts, where we'll have a lot of people in town, it's our big tourism time, the spring. So, I mean, it's also something to consider.
And also, if we're going to do
The same thing next year, we need to go out, get with Dan, and go ahead and go out with bids for lights for next year now, because they go to market in January, go to China and all that to start purchasing.
I have a little problem with if, I don't want an if. I want those lights fixed for next year. I don't want an issue like this again.
You won't, you won't have this issue next year.
Let me ask this question. So, we spent 45,000 to 47,000 on lights the first go-round, and then we're spending another 23,000, so that's $70,000 in lights. I don't, did we spend $70,000 on lights last year? And the lights, granted, trees grew, they didn't double in size, and then
What's running the cost up is LED. You get $3.49 a string versus $9.76 a string or something like that.
But weren't they all LED last year?
They were not, yeah. There's a mixture of incandescent and LED even now.
We had very few LEDs. Because of the cost, we weren't able to purchase LED.
I thought that we had gone all LED last
Wouldn't the power be more expensive than the
For incandescent, yes. And we have an analysis on the cost savings on the energy, and it's significant with LED. The other thing is, just so you will know, as you're looking at that green sheet, the $9 an item that he's talking about was 100-foot strands. What I'm giving you a quote on is 150-foot strands. So, we get a lesser quantity, but that was what I was able to get.
Would the LED potentially last longer? I mean, would you be able to use them?
I don't know what the usage is.
Depends on, I've got something at the office now that we took down last year. The problem is, you know, like, you're still going to get corroded inside the sockets and everything, so, you know, being outside in the weather for that long period of time.
There is one we're going to try out, though, that it is a string with a little bitty bulb. I mean, there's nothing for it to get caught up on, and there's nothing, there's no socket. It's just, you know, so, if we can find those, I think we should at least test them this year. That would, I think, last more than one year in the future.
All right, council. So, if it comes up next meeting, how would you, are you still a yes down here?
Yes.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, I want them fixed. I want, you know, I don't want to have, I don't want to be talking about this come next year. If we got to fix them, I guess we'll have to fix them.
My guess, my hangup, and I would vote yes, but reluctantly, but very reluctantly, because I didn't, you know, when we ordered all of these lights this year, nobody said, "All right, we're going to order all these lights, but we're going to cover half the trees." You know, I was under the impression that the trees would be covered, and because if it weren't going to be covered, I would assume that they would have come back and said, "Well, we're going to need more money if we're going to cover these trees." To be quite honest, I see a lot of strands down at the, on the trunks of the trees instead of up in the branches. Just what I see, but I'd still support it.
We'll caution you again, if we wait two weeks, and I know you don't want to add it to the agenda, but if we wait two weeks and they sell out of inventory, we still might not be able to get the full mail.
You can order them now, because we're going to vote on it in two weeks.
So, we can order them now?
That's what I, yeah, we're not going to vote on it. We're not going to put this on the agenda after what we went through in the work session.
Okay.
So, I, it sounds like you've got the votes to approve the expense in 10 days.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right. That closes my comments.
I got one, but we're not going to have this problem next year, is that right? That's what I want to make sure of.
Anything else? All right. Moving on, item five is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional legal services for review of pending litigation. Now, this is RFQ number PS 010-17 with Jones Walker LLC with a cost not to exceed $11,000. Somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second authorizing the mayor to execute the contract for professional legal services for review of pending litigation. We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? I'd just like to say that this is something that's been pending now for several weeks, and this should come as no surprise to anyone. So, with that, I'll call the question. All is in favor of authorizing the mayor to execute the contract? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Resolution passes. Item number six is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for professional engineering services for Fly Creek Marina Seawall improvements in 2017 with FMS Engineering Services Incorporated with a cost not to exceed $5,200. Somebody like to
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's see, we have some harbor board members here. There they are. I want to thank y'all for your diligence on this and saving the city quite a bit of money. I know that this is just for the engineering services, and we'll have to vote on the actual construction costs of this, but thanks for staying on top of this harbor board. And Kevin, the harbor board, you sit on. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Contract is approved. Item number seven is a resolution to award a bid for crowd control barricades for the Public Works Department to Friedrichs Custom Manufacturing with a bid proposal of 186 units at $91 each. This is not to exceed $16,926 total. Somebody like to entertain a motion to award the bid?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is that a local manufacturing?
New Orleans.
New Orleans.
Any further questions? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of awarding the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Bid is awarded. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution to approve leasing of four multi-function network devices, also known as copier scanner and faxes for the City of Fairhope off the Alabama State Department of Purchasing bid list with a cost of $14,204.68 per year, or $42,614.4 per three-year contract life. Would somebody like to entertain a motion to approve these leases?
So moved.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the leasing of the four multi-function network devices. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the lease, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, the leases are approved. Thank you, council. Item number nine is a resolution to approve the leasing of one multi-function network device, copier scanner fax for the City of Fairhope off the U.S. Commodities Buying Group with a cost of $2,721.72 per year, or $8,165.16 per three-year contract life. Would somebody make a motion to approve this lease?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease of this network device. Who's here to answer a question on this? Dan, I don't know, maybe you can answer this. Can we also pay a per copy price when we use these, or do we just buy toner and paper and make as many copies as we want?
There's a, on most of these devices, there's a per copy.
Okay.
Most of them are off. Most of them are black and white. This is the large format copy multi-function machine. The others were the ones that we use for standard copy.
This is kind of a unique thing that we need.
And I guess we round the numbers to prove to ourselves that leasing, even with the per copy cost, is cheaper than buying. And I know that in just a few years, these things are outdated.
Yes, the upgrades are similar to the ones we have, so functionality will be the same. The operator functionality will be very similar. Functionality of the units has improved to a certain extent, and this individual device is needed for GIS. This is the large format printer that we've ever had.
And I really just waited till this item to ask those questions. I actually was curious about that on the first ones as well, so. Any further
Who, how does it work as far as repair work? If the machine goes down or something of that nature?
On the, on the state contract ones, it is either inclusive, or we pay some of that per month, per year. It's basically pick up the phone, they come, and they fix it.
Okay.
It's a maintenance portion of the thing, of the agreement. And the state contract is absolutely like that. On the other one, I have to read the details, but I believe it's very, very, very similar. They don't want you touching their machines, basically. And it's, with the company we have, that we're getting them from now, it's going to be the same company that won the state contract again, they're fairly efficient. We are now for a hundred thousand.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Any further questions, council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the lease of the one multi-function network device, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, that lease is approved as well. Thank you, council. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute an agreement concerning tolling of the statute of limitations between the Utilities Board of the City of Daphne and the City of Fairhope regarding jointly owned gas lines. Mr. Wynn, could you please explain this in layman's terms to the council?
The City of Daphne Utility Board and the City of Fairhope jointly own some gas lines. And, in the last couple of months, an issue has arisen about the accounting procedures that are used to account as to how much money that comes in through those gas lines the City of Fairhope pays to the City of Daphne. And the accounting of these issues can get complex. And with the help of Council President Jack Burrell, a negotiation was started amongst the Utility Board of Daphne and Fairhope to say, "Let's not have a lawsuit about this. Let's sit down and see if we can get our accounting departments and our numbered crunchers together and get it worked out and settled between us, and see if something's owed. We'll see what it is and get it paid." But, the City Utility Board of Daphne was concerned about their time limit to file certain claims against the city might expire during this process when they're trying to get it worked out. So, tolling the statute of limitations means that Fairhope is agreeing that the time period for Daphne to file a lawsuit, if it deems that necessary, is going to be extended to give both parties some time to work it out without filing a lawsuit. And so, this is an agreement where the City of Fairhope is agreeing to toll or extend that statute of limitations to allow the parties to work on the issue. And Daphne won't lose its right to file suit for certain claims.
You get all that, council?
Got it.
Somebody like to entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of allowing the mayor to execute the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Item number 11 is a resolution authorizing the submission of FY 2017 Transportation Alternatives Program grant to the Alabama Department of Transportation to construct new sidewalk facilities for pedestrians between U.S. Highway 98 and Baldwin County Road 13 along, both along Manly Road and Baldwin County 44, and authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to sign all required grant application documents on behalf of the city. Sherry, will you want to, is it, I'm sorry, Jennifer?
Jennifer.
That's what happens when we don't get to our agenda meeting. I call the wrong one if you discuss it.
And Stacy.
And Stacy.
Stacy can't explain. This is the, this is the TAP Transportation Alternative Program that we discussed in the work session, what, maybe two months ago? And to make sure that you guys were okay with us applying for this one. Again, the project description is the area between Highway 13 and Founders on 44, and then between U.S. 98 and Middle School on Manly. Stacy?
Yes. ALDOT is accepting applications from municipal governments for FY 2017 TAP grants, and the total project cost is estimated at $383,267. If funded, the grant will pay 80% of that cost, or $306,614, and the City of Fairhope will be responsible for providing 20%, or $76,653. In addition, the city will be responsible for paying the engineering design fees, and for ensuring long-term operation and maintenance of those new sidewalk facilities. But, the, we did get preliminary engineering information from Volkert, and the basic idea was just to fill in the gaps where we don't have sidewalks currently, that are close to Founders Park, Fairhope High School, and Fairhope Middle School.
Questions, council? So, assuming the engineering costs are 10 or 15%, that's $450, so that's what, $45,000 to $67,000 in additional expense for engineering design fees. I just want to make sure that, you know, you're comfortable, council, with submitting I just want to make sure that, you know, you're comfortable, counsel, with submitting this application. Should we be awarded this, we would have to come up with the $76,653 plus whatever the engineering fees are, which would be roughly 10 to 15% of the project cost, I would, I would guess would be a good estimate.
That's what's been running through, pretty close.
What's that, Jennifer?
It's, that's pretty close. The ALDOT, they, they want you to have a separate contract for the engineering design and from the CE and I.
Right.
And pretty much it's about 10% for design and about the same for CE and I.
Or 20%.
It's gonna end up being 20-
20% of $450,000, that's $90,000.
The A-trip, the A-trip on Fairhope Avenue ran about 22%. For, for design and for CE and I.
I love public projects. Okay.
But TAP, you know, the sidewalk is not gonna be, you know, the design-wise and CE and I for a sidewalk is not gonna be, you know, quite extensive. So 20% is probably, 10 for each is probably minimal.
Okay. Questions, counsel? Sidewalks, is that something that would, could come out of impact money or no? Jack, do you know?
Yes.
Sidewalks can cude. Recreations, fire, police. We, we have, we have a fund that can fund sidewalks, if not out of impact fees. Any further questions? We have a motion on this, then. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second authorizing submission of the TAP grant. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of submitting the TAP grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, submission's approved. Thank you. Okay, item number 12 is a resolution, the City Council approves the selection of Jones Walker for professional legal services. Professional legal services restricted to those not covered under the city's commercial liability policy and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the selection?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the selection. Any further discussion? I, I would like to say that, having met the representative from Jones Walker, Mr. Matt McDonald, very pleasant gentleman, I'm sure that he will do a good job for the city. You know, sometimes change is always not comfortable, but change is sometimes inevitable. And that's just, that's the way it goes sometimes in, in the city government. And so I think that the mayor, in selecting Jones Walker LLP for this, has done some due diligence, and I would look forward, if they're approved, to working with them.
Can I just make a note real quick, it's good news. But also Matt's firm has agreed that, you know, when, when insurance is taking over, he's not gonna charge over insurance, which has not been what we've currently agreed to. And in November alone, we paid over $60,000 to our other. So it's a good decision, I promise.
Were you, were you squeaking when you were telling?
No, I was just like, "I'm so happy. We won't have to do that anymore." It's okay.
That's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second for, to approve the selection of Jones Walker LLP. Any further discussion, any further questions? Mr. McDonald is here, if you have any questions for him. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Still get to come back with a fee schedule. Okay, item 13 is a resolution that the City Council approves the selection of Elias Technologies, also known as Cyber Forensics 360, for professional IT services and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a, a second for the selection of Elias Technologies. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this selection, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay. Item 14 is a resolution that the City Council hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and establish a not-to-exceed limit with Cows Murphy Glover and Associates LLC for professional engineering capacity studies for the gas, water, and sewer utilities. Somebody like to make a motion authorizing the mayor?
Make a motion. So moved. We authorized her to do that.
Do we have a second?
I, I've got a, I've got a question. I, I guess, Mayor, I'm directing this at you. I, I, I don't know this particular group, and I went and checked out their website and looked at some of their clients and their references. I didn't see any municipalities as some of their other clients. Did they, have they done municipal work before?
I think-
Do we have somebody here?
Oh, I didn't. Are you coming up for that? Oh. I'm like, I didn't know if you were gonna speak to that. This is Gary Cows, and, I mean, I wish I remembered this story, 'cause it is pretty impressive. But he was the engineer called recently to New York to pull that big piece of equipment out of the sinkhole. Like, he's very, very, very good. But as far as, yeah, I've never looked at his website. I just know that he comes very recommended, and he already has the amount for the, the study that we're gonna do at $20,000, which I thought was really, really good. Again, we've been spending a lot of money on engineering, so I wanted to be very cautious on these decisions.
Are we in discussion of this, or do we have to second?
Well, we're not in discussion phase yet, but I did, we didn't have a, a presentation on this prior, so I allowed the discussion to continue. We are, we do have a motion. Well, I did, I did allow the discussion to occur.
See, I, I have some, a lot of questions as far as, I understand it may be great getting a trip, a machine out of a hole, but first of all, they're not familiar with our system at all, where we have a lot of engineers here that are familiar with it. And I think it'd take a lot of time to get them, or familiarize themselves with it. And again, they haven't, as far as I could find, they haven't done any work as far as municipal sewer utilities drainage, this type of thing.
They, they can have done a proposal, I didn't even know it was gonna be on, this was something that we talked about that we needed to do.
Right. They needed to do it, there's no doubt.
Two weeks, or whenever it was, you know, about the study. So we put together the list, and I'm wanting to give people more opportunity, our, our locals. And I know that he comes very recommended, and I wish that there was somebody who knew him better than me, 'cause I wasn't prepared to make a re- So if you wanna hold this off, again, you're just, right now, just to get the letter, and I have the letter that states what he would be doing and the price. That was sent to Dan. Didn't you forward that to me, or maybe he did? Did you get that? Letter from Gary Cows. This is for the utility study. It's not, I mean, the name of his company is different. I can forward the letter, but because I'm still new at the process, I didn't know that I was having to put together something for this specific. But again, I am wanting to use different engineering, because we have been using a, a lot of the same engineering for a long time, and I do want fresh opportunities for, for people and fresh eyes. But I do know that, here it is. So if you wanna put it off, that's fine, but this was just to get that, what I talked about in the work session.
Well, again, I understand, you know, we'd like to get fresh eyes, but in this particular case, I think for expediency, it'd be very beneficial for the city to use engineers that were very familiar with the system and, and have worked on it before, know about it. It was, I think it would certainly speed things up.
I disagree. The reason is because this person is probably one of the most knowledgeable engineers in the southeast. And if I was more prepared, I would give you all of his credentials. But he's doing this probably more out of wanting to help Fairhope than it is anything else. And he's definitely the person that I chose, because I know he's gonna get in there, do an exceptional job, unbiased, you want fresh eyes. I don't want somebody studying something that has been a part of maybe enhancing it or putting a Band-Aid here and there. I mean, I want fresh eyes on this, and this is how we're gonna do all audits from here forward.
I, I'm okay with fresh eyes, I just, I just wanna make sure it's whoever it is knows, has experience.
He absolutely does. I mean, this is not just anyone. I mean, this is probably the best in our region. So.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion. I'm looking for a second. Okay, hearing no second, resolution dies for failure to receive a second. Item number 15 is appointment of City Council Liaison for the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee. Robert Brown has graciously agreed, so Councilman Brown, I hereby appoint you to be the City Council Liaison for the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next item is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the City Council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Lynn Mazer, and I live in Rock Creek. So that there's no concern about a conflict of interest here, I am not currently on the city's payroll, but I am fulfilling a promise that I made to most of you sitting up there during the campaign season. I stand before you as a private resident of Fairhope, and I'm asking you formally to please repeal ordinance 1572. This ordinance was created when the previous council approved the amendment to the Fly Creek PUD. The developer is reworking his site plan. It has not been submitted, nor has it been approved. This is the time to repeal the ordinance. It is crucial, you do so before he submits anything else. There is Alabama case law to support your action at this time. You can refer to Grayson v. City of Birmingham or Greenbrier Village LLC v. Mountain Brook City. If you have not yet received copies of those cases, I can arrange to get them to you. Please. Okay, I will do that. But please show the citizens of Fairhope that you put their interests first, and at their next possible moment, I would hope on December 22nd, you would repeal this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mazer. Is there anyone else?
My name's Janet Hinton. I live on Francilla Circle in Fairhope. And this is my only, only my second time to come to a city council meeting anywhere ever in my whole life. I've lived here for six years, and this year, when the lights came on for Christmas, I thought, yes, they look great. I never thought they looked incomplete. In fact, for six years, I've looked at those net things over the trees, I dislike them. I'm all about design. I'm a retired college art professor of 35 years. I like the way things look, such as flowers and trees and so forth. And I was shocked to hear how much money is spent in this. I'm thinking, why can't we get citizen sponsors to sponsor a tree and pay for the lights? The, the instruments at least. Anyway, I thought they looked great, how they were done this year. I don't think lights have to go to every single branch that's gonna grow every single year. And starting them at one point and bringing them up into the branches for a certain amount, I think's a good idea, and design-wise, I never thought it was incomplete. And that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hinton. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I will now close public participation. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Our next meeting is on December the 22nd.